This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Whether we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiorscitizen.com today.
Having a first and second, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Moving along to our wicked mission, first up is the Elswood Grade Committee. Ms. Rhonda Davis and Dr. Lewis. You can all come up.
Early Childhood Center with France. And so with the problem of the deficit for lunch program in our district, we have applied for a grant this year and we would like to give $1,000 to Elkhorn Lunch Program and Lewis Lunch Program.
Twenty-four years in Excelsior Springs Schools. Athena Gillespie. We had the music teacher at Lewis Elementary, twenty-one years for Excelsior Springs Schools. Twenty-six years overall. Mr. Ryan Smarker, Computer Technology, the president. Brian spent twenty years in Excelsior Springs Schools. You guys stand here so we can get a picture. Four years in Excelsior Springs Schools, twenty-eight years overall. Getting rid of the weeds. And if anyone has noticed, it's rained for about forty straight days. And our old building leaks a little bit. So they've also been over there helping keep water out and get the water out that got in. C.O. has been in diary with some help from these wonderful gentlemen. They've done an excellent job putting a little TLC into us. We really appreciate them. Mr. Jeff and...
We begin with a look back at MSBA's Advocacy Day held on April 9th in Jefferson City. Preparations for the event took place throughout March. MSBA's spring virtual meeting and the Lunch and Learn webinars prepared school board members for their meetings with legislators and provided information on several legislative issues now before the Missouri General Assembly as it heads for its May adjournment. Senator Carla Esslinger spoke during the Advocacy Day event at the Mill Bottom before the program headed to the Capitol. Senator Esslinger applauded school board members for putting children first.
And I want to thank you most importantly for all these to me, all these, all these, putting children first. Your decisions should never be based on what is good for the individual. It cannot be based on what is good for maybe a particular aspect of your particular aspect of your school district. But you guys have this huge challenge that you have to look at the whole. School board members have to look at all and be able to truly navigate that school district. And I'm totally, I'm just applaud you because it's not typically the highest paid job, is it?
At the Rotunda, the Carter D. Ward Excellence in Advocacy Award was presented to Jennifer Woolsey, formerly of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Education. The award is given annually to a past or present board member who has excelled at advocacy. Jennifer stressed the importance of protecting public education.
The work that I'm very proud of, of course, I'm very proud of my children and my family, but working on behalf of all the children in Missouri, I'm really super passionate about public education and protecting it. It is completely under attack right now. And it is our job as school board members to try to do everything within our power to keep that from happening.
Advocacy Day also included a student showcase at the Capitol, where students from districts throughout the state were on hand to discuss and demonstrate innovative programs in their districts. Senator Lincoln Huff also spoke at the event and visited the showcase to see firsthand the amazing students and programs from across the state. The deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year '24, but the offer expires on June 1st. The program provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one year at no cost access to MSBA's online Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool, MoEOP. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA's Center for Education Safety, sat down with CES's Bob Klossmeyer to discuss the importance of a safety plan.
It's always easier to justify what you've done than try to justify what you didn't do.
Absolutely.
And that conversation that really needs to be had in every school in the state to understand why we need the tool.
It does.
That builds an EOP name and not just here in Missouri, but around the country.
Right.
If your school district right now doesn't have an EOP anywhere, you'd be a problem.
It makes no sense not to have a plan because, you know, the safety of your school is centered around that plan. Everything, all the procedures you do for school safety is included in that plan. So that is the focal point of your school safety mission.
So that really is the foundation for advocacy. If you have that EOP tool, it's a foundational aspect which you could build an entire thing.
Absolutely. Yes.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool and upcoming EOP regional workshops. Make plans now to attend MSBA's Summer Summit, June 24th and 25th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. The summit's general session features Megan Johnson, a generational expert, speaker, and author. With the workforce spanning across five generations, it can be a struggle to find the right balance between the sometimes conflicting needs of each generation.
Now, my presentation is titled "Zap the Generational Gap", and that's what we're going to do. Now, some of you are thinking, I can already feel you thinking this. You're thinking, mm, I bet this is just going to be one of those generational bashing sessions. Or is it going to be one of those sessions where they're going to tell us that we have to throw out all the good stuff we've been doing all these years and we have to sacrifice everything for somebody else? No, no, no. Not only are we going to talk about the qualities each generation brings into the workplace, but we're going to talk about the strengths and the action items you can take to improve your multi-generational relationships.
Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website, as well as an explanation of this year's process. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the website. And finally, if you've been following MSBA's social media pages, you've seen many of the regional winners of MSBA's student scholarships. Congratulations to all of the regional winners and to Zach Shockey of Jefferson City, who is also the statewide winner. All of the essays from the regional winners are on the MSBA website. There were a record number of entrants this year, and these students truly exemplify the amazing learning happening in every corner of the state. Congratulations to all. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
Give a throwback to those days by celebrating some of these numbers. So as of... The next slide I want to talk to you about, we have reading success plans for the first time this year. That was a state mandated program. Super great for kids, super, super difficult to implement. Didn't know what we were getting into, but 358 of our elementary students received a reading success plan. So not only did our teachers do everything that was asked of them, but they grew our kids. They monitored them closely. Like, I can't say enough about the work that our title teachers did. They did amazing work with the students that they were charged with. So those reading success plans, the kids that did not graduate from those will actually stay with them until they graduate from the reading success plan. So we have 358 of those this year. Three hundred and thirty-six new books will be introduced to a student between kindergarten and fifth grade. So that's all of the books that are associated with our new Witten Wisdom program. So those are actual books that you can hold in their hands. They're authentic texts, which is part of our new philosophy here. Pretty proud of the fact that that program puts 336 books in the hands of our kids. Instructional coaches, we have five that are phenomenal. They did forty-six coaching cycles so far this year. They work with teachers constantly, but I'm talking about, these are formal coaching cycles that take between two to four weeks. They collect data, this is actual growth that they could demonstrate. They... This is really kind of an intense opportunity for a teacher to grow in their practice. Our coaches are highly trained in coaching cycles and collecting the appropriate data. So very, very proud of the fact that on top of everything they do, they still manage to do forty-six coaching cycles with our teachers. Seventeen teachers, for the first time, went through a curriculum cycle as a curriculum cycle is supposed to be done. So very proud of the fact that they worked with one of our instructional coaches at the middle school. Seventeen of those teachers picked resources. They went through all of the curriculum. They just did the full process, they're behind it, and they plan on leading the charge next year with science. I'm currently trying to think outside the box with science. We're mandated to teach thirty minutes a day. And with the schedules, science falls at the end of the day a lot of time, and it's something that's skipped over. So we're continually trying to beef up science for our kids. That's always a kid's favorite thing, is the hands-on experiments that come with science. So that's a top priority. Very proud of the work that all of those teachers, it took a lot of time, but they did it correctly, they did it the right way. This is something that I'm super proud of. This year alone, we taught 182 second graders how to swim. Everybody always calls me like the curriculum Nazi. I won't let you do anything outside of curriculum, and it's not true. Like, I believe in doing, educating the whole kid. So every kid that goes through Excelsior Springs School District, when you're in second grade, every kid will graduate knowing how to swim. So the community center was an incredible partner. Nate specifically, so great to work with. They just bent over backwards trying to accommodate every need that we had. Transportation was fantastic, and it's obvious in the faces here. The kids absolutely loved us. So we taught 182 kids how to swim. The next number that I wanted to show you is 32%. And what this represents is, at the beginning of last year, Letters is a two-year program. So we started with forty-four teachers in the Letters program, K-3. After two years, starting with the beginning of next year, 32% of those teachers are no longer in our K-3 classrooms, which means it's kind of turning into a Groundhog Day for me, where every two years, I'm hoping not to have to graduate, or have to educate 32% of our teachers and putting them back in training. Letters training, these are all foundational to the literacy plan that we have in place. It costs roughly, I know that our PDC and Desi has put a ton of money in it, but the cost to get teachers' letters trained is around $1,500 to the state. We utilize professional development funds to get them substitute teachers for four days of the school year. In addition to that, we give them their meals, their mileage. It is approximately a $2,500 investment to get teachers' letters certified. When you consider that 32% of that, a lot of times it was to train our teachers so that someone else could utilize them. Some of those teachers moved to our high school, some of them moved to fifth grade. Some of them moved around a little bit, and that's just the reality of the situation. So been working with the administrators, and they know that that's a top priority to try to keep those certified teachers at where they're needed most, at the K-3 area. Looking next year, the plan originally was to put fourth and fifth grade teachers through the Letters program as well. Looking at this, it's literally the same amount of teachers that it took for four grades the first time. I only have two grades left, but it's the same number as I did the first time. So every two years, it's just going to be a continual cost to not only the district but the state to try to get caught up with the amount of training that teachers are supposed to have. So that is a big concern to me. In addition to the Letters training, here are the other pillars to our literacy program. At the beginning of next year, 42% of our K-5 teachers will be teaching a new grade level of Witten Wisdom. Whether we have to move them into... Forty-two percent, so nearly half of our teachers are starting over at Step One next year. Thirty-eight percent of our K-3 teachers will need training in our phonics program. Again, huge pillar in what we're doing. Thirty-three percent of our K-2 teachers will need training in our phonemic awareness program. So I've had to look at, really kind of take a 10,000-foot view at our professional development, looking ahead. A lot of the things that I had envisioned in doing my fourth, fifth, and sixth year can't happen because of all of the new training that we really have to do. Professional development will be largely to grow teachers that honestly don't have a background in education. Some of them do, which is great, we love that. But many, many, many of our teachers are first or second-year teachers or coming to us from out of state, coming to us from non-traditional situations. Great people, love kids, they're coachable and they're trainable. That's really the only requirement to be an excellent teacher, so I'm not worried about it. But it does make the curriculum instruction side of it have to really rethink what your priorities are. So just wanted to share that with you guys as far as building a foundation. It's looking like that's something that we're going to have to make an investment in. I'm hoping that moving forward, it's a smaller and smaller investment just with the amount of retention that we can keep. It's so important to, it's such a huge thing in order to get academic success. A highly qualified teacher is really everything. So retention is just something that, I know Dr. Bulmore and I, at least daily...
Of the four pillars, are you going to like focus on all four of them and continue to push all four of them? Or is there ever a space in which we think like, maybe the pushing all four is what's pushing some of the teachers out because it's so, so much? Have to have it, have to have it, but the spacing it out or other ways to look at it? Is there any options on that? Or do you think that that doesn't even qualify for what some of this term is coming from?
So I can tell you that I have an instructional coach that did not want to leave, and she left to drive fifteen minutes further and is making $15,000 a year more. So I believe that that's, that teachers are... Piece of how to teach a kid to read that you can do that's scaffolded. It's a holistic, it's literally a rope, it's represented how it ties together. And really, you have to have all aspects of that all together to teach a kid how to read. So the Letters training that teachers do, every one of our teachers has said, and I think Ms. Teekin, it's great training. It's a heavy lift, but we're seeing the impact in our classrooms where I think, I haven't heard of a teacher that said, "I wish I never would have taken that training." I think the difference is before, we may not have allotted enough of the training time, assuming that fewer of our teachers would need to catch up on Hegarty training and Witten Wisdom training. Next year, that's a high priority, making sure that we have the time to really just touch the foundational things. It's a heavy part of our curriculum, and so ensuring that all of our teachers feel comfortable with that before the kids get there is a high priority. It's elementary teaching, that's just part of it, is teaching a kid how to read. It really is what it is. We have combined social studies, we've integrated it into our literacy program. We just had what I lovingly refer to as Battle of the Minutes, where we look at a classroom day, we invited teachers to sit in on it and give us their opinion of how many minutes they thought should be spent in small group time, how many minutes should be, you know, given to social studies. Their voice was heard, but it's hard to fit the amount of time it takes to educate a kid in one school day, let alone, for those of you that have been teachers, it's a lot. However, no one trains teachers better than Excelsior Springs School District. One of the reasons that other schools love our teachers, it's widely known that our professional development is better than most. We've been known for that since before I got here, and we will continue to be known for that as long as I'm here and probably after. So we get buy-in from teachers all the time in what we should do and how we should do it. The state really plays a pretty big role in what we can and can't do. But we're always taking opportunities, if I can make a situation easier for a teacher, we make a situation easier for a teacher. I'm currently working on building a course for the new people to our staff, the nuts and bolts type things like how you log in to the HR portal to call in sick for the day. Just the basic things on how to do your job that really you have to know how to do, but it'd take a ton of professional development time. I'm working on creating a course to give that to them ahead of time so they can spend more time training with some of the things that are more important. So it's a battle for time really, and I think that we're doing it well considering what we have.
A couple of updates for you guys. I wanted to share our extended school year information. For those of you who may not know, we offer an extended school year every summer. It's for students whose IDPs demonstrate that they need a little extra time. And it's basically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for three weeks in June, and then the same thing in July. It's from 8:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And we will, we have teachers and parents who will be working... And we will, we have teachers and parents who will be working it, but we also have an administrator and a nurse on duty each day, so that's something that we're excited about. You know, Dr. Harris is in charge of our summer school program, so she'll be on duty for us, helping in June, and then our administrators all graciously signed up for days to be there to support in July. So that's something that, that will be rolling here in June, and obviously that's in addition to our regular summer school program. And then really the only other thing I wanted to share with you this month is, we have 20 staff members who have signed up to attend our Missouri Schoolwide Positive Behavior Institute this summer. So PBS is our behavior system that we are using district-wide, and we kind of relaunched it. We called this year our Soft Launch, but we, our buildings did nothing soft about it. They just took it and had run with it. And so it's been really great to see that we have 20 staff members who've signed up that want to give up some of their summertime to go and learn, is really exciting. But also, we were invited to do many presentations, so our district will be presenting eight different presentations during those two days. So, and at all levels, which is so cool. Like our high school, you know, really, we weren't really implementing any PBS. We did a long time ago, and then we fell off, and then this year they've just taken the challenge and are presenting on the progress that they're making in the high school level. So middle schools, they created a cool video that was selected to be part of the video presentation, and then our early childhood centers doing several sessions, and then I'm doing a session with the Missouri lady from Destin on what it really means to do a full district-wide implementation. So a piece of this that's also really cool is just the fact that all of this is paid for through our Clay County Children's Fund grants. So having that grant in place is really affording us the opportunity to do these foundational pieces, to help behavior and get some of those systems in place. Because if those systems aren't in place, then if behavior gets in the way of the academics, then it really doesn't matter what we're trying to do academically if we're not able to sustain and support behaviors. So I'm pretty excited about all the, all the people who are going to go learn this summer. Any questions, Mom?
But for the purpose of this, we're hiring teachers. If you know anyone that's certified, especially in the elementary, we would love to hire them. If you know anyone that's looking to get into a new career, we can find lots of ways to get them temporarily certified and train them up. So send them our way. Safety and security, so cameras, so work with Mr. Kenzie, I'm creating a plan to replace the over 100 cameras throughout the district that are 10-years-old. And so we're working on that, that's anywhere between a five and 10-year plan, depending on the new safety grants coming out like we got for the window film. But we'll work on those throughout the district budget, short-term and long-term planning. If you look at some of our videos, they're grainy, there's water marks on the edge, sometimes it's hard to get done when we need to get done, and we've learned throughout the last 10 years with our spaces where they use marking, so we're working on that plan. And that'll be part of the, it's very, very appropriate that they talked about the EOC Emergency Operations Plan in the MSBA report, so that'll be a program that we're utilizing through the grant that Mr. Kenzie will work on the principles this summer with, just working on the end building and district safety plans. So we're excited about that and working on that. Food services, so free breakfast and lunch during March through May. Participation jumped, that was the goal. So just to compare pre and post, when they were free, so January 1st through February 29th, breakfast and lunch, we served 55,056 meals, which was 55% of our students participating. And then March 1st through May 1st, which is why I submitted this data, we had breakfast and lunch, 90,027 meals, which is 65% of students participating. So that's, we did almost 35,000 more meals in March and April and January and February, and that's a 63.5% increase in participation. So we're very excited during such an important time of the year to be able to feed our students both breakfast and lunch. Again, we wish we could do that all the time, we can't. We're trying to target the times that may be most important for learning, and we're successful, if you're looking for numbers. To piggyback on that, lunch and breakfast will be free again during summer school, and that is not only for students attending summer school, that is for anyone that lives within our district that is 18 years or younger. So if they're interested in picking up a free meal, then contact the building administrator at summer school, and then we'll come up with a plan on how they can go get their free meal. So if you hear about that, spread it around. Moving along to attendance. So there's some red numbers up there. So attendance has actually remained fairly steady since late March, January, February, and March. All of the many sicknesses, which I think the... A lot of kids, a lot of kids sick. And those are your year-to-date percentages. Things are going on around the district to address attendance. So attendance hearings, all the buildings have attendance series, assumes that maybe at or near or below 90%. For example, the middle school, there's three home business and even the juvenile court day, based on attendance and lack thereof. So we're getting some support from the city, state, and county now, trying to address these attendance issues. At the high school, in Career Center, attendance intervention, teachers met with around 80 students. Forty-two attendance intervention plans were set up. To address that, we know that the amazing things happening in our classroom, in front of our mates and teachers, they don't matter if the kids don't show up. 90% attendance is really our bare minimum where we want kids, and that's missing one day or two days. So we really need to get kids in class at school more often, and we'll feed them for a reason why. That's all I have for operations. If anyone has any questions. Questions?
These are rookie questions.
So I'll go backwards. So summer school... Why we provide lunch to, lunch and meals to anyone that's 18 years or under, that's just for members of the state program. How we fund the ones throughout the school year, are any, any money that is made through the first food service program has to be spent on the food service program. So if we've collected more money than we've spent on meals from what Airmoney charges us, that goes into a food service account that has to be spent on food service. It can be through meals, it can be through equipment, it can be through supplies, and so we thought that the most beneficial way to do that was to give it back to the kids and give all kids. Covering that a little bit more, a little bit, but anytime you build a budget for next year, we're going to start off with the assumption that we're going to have reserves of around $8 million. Obviously, if that fluctuates, that will change everything with what our projections are for the end of next year, but not knowing where we start, we'll know that at the end of next month. I want to make sure that some of these things that we're moving forward with are in alignment with what the board expects and anticipates. So one of the things we're anticipating, and a step to every employee is that they get an increase for next year. We also want to put $1,000 onto the base for all teachers, that'll get us to a minimum salary of $40,000. That will be the new state minimum, the Senate Bill 727, this is going to require anyway, will already be there. What does that mean for us? It means the people who are far under 40 are going to get additional money from the state to help them get to 40. We're already there, so we're not going to receive any money for that. What you're going to see happen moving forward is, it puts us in a difficult position because where we're located in Kansas City, we are much bigger and have a lot more resources than smaller schools to our east and to our north. We are. And so we take staff from there because we pay more. And then staff closer to the city pay more than we do and have more resources than we do, they take staff from us. It's just how it works, right? The problem is now that the state minimum is going to cook up to where our minimum is, we're not receiving any additional money like they are. We will no longer be able to pull people from those smaller schools to fill our positions, and yet our people will still be moving towards places that have more resources. So that is going to be the crux of where we are moving forward. I would say this is one of our number-one issues, probably impediments to seeing academics successful moving forward. We can't have a consistent staff that we can train and keep and be able to learn and grow. When you come into teaching, you're probably not the best teacher you're going to be in your first two or three years. It's after that that you really kind of hit your groove and start clicking for you. So if we can't keep people into that part where they're really achieving at a high level, that's going to be a detriment to our kids. So we're going to have to take a look at possibilities and options of how do we retain staff, which should be our number-one priority moving forward. The only way to do that, and think of this, we've got to make some choices, and they're going to be tough choices. We either have to run a tax issue to the community and ask for higher taxes, have all that money go towards teacher salaries and benefits, that's one option. We either have to cut back on employees, have fewer employees, which means fewer programs, fewer activities, fewer, a lot of different things, we could cut back positions, or we could potentially have to close a building and be able to take that money and repurpose that into staff salaries so that we can keep the people in other areas. So you're talking about drastic measures moving forward. I wanted to bring this up in the report because I wanted to introduce it for the first time, so I want you to digest it over the next month or two, but it's something we're going to have to start talking about into the next year, and we need to at least have the discussion of whether or not we want to move forward with an increase in taxes specifically geared towards staff pay. Because if we have, we had multiple 20-plus-year employees leave to go make $15,000 to $20,000 a year or more in their same job in other districts, that's not something we can beat with. And I'll be honest with you, I will bet you right now, if we would have been closer, even if there would have been more to go there, I don't think they would have gone if we would have been within $5,000 to $7,000. I think they probably would have saved. But when you get to 15,000 to 20,000, you can't blame somebody, right? So to me, that, I just want to throw that out there in my report because I want you guys to at least start thinking about the ramifications and how serious this is. The other thing to think about, we're talking about all the training, and one of the directions from the board was you guys wanted to see increased academic rigor achievement. Number-one thing we wanted to see. Happy to do that, we deliver that, I think, on many fronts. The problem is, it's harder for teachers because we're expecting more of them. So now we're expecting more of them, and some of them don't want to do that more, so they can go somewhere else, make more money and not have those expectations. And now it's even more difficult to pull from these smaller schools because I'm really making you do more than they are, and I'm not really paying you more than they are. You see the conundrum we're in? So we have to make a decision. Number one, do we believe that stronger academics are the number-one goal, what our argument is? But if we're going to do that, we have to understand what that means to our staff, what they're willing to do, and what they're willing to do it for. That's where we're at. It's just, I don't know how to be more direct or more honest about, the only way to do this is to either take things off people's plate, or we pay them more because we're asking more. It's that simple. So I throw out a couple of different options there, we can, we can talk more about that, but I want you to just think about that over the next couple of months, and we can have more conversations about it, and we can start delving into possibilities, opportunities, directions we want to go, directions we don't want to go, and we have a plan this next year that would be my expectation. Senate Bill 727, if you're not aware, it's kind of an omnibus package, which had a lot in it. I'm not going to go through every aspect of it, because there's some key points here I do want to cover. They do have budgetary concerns for me as well. Number one is, they're making the requirement to go to 169 school days under calendar. One of the things we did is we went from 174 down to 162. We dropped 12 days off, and we linkeded the time. So the number of instructional hours throughout the year was the same as anyone else. But now that they have a log on hand, says we have to do it, we're going to have to do it. It also kind of kills the need to move forward anymore with a four-day school week. Four-day school week, honestly, for us, is probably off the table. I don't think it's worth the committee that we were putting together to investigate it for them to continue, I think we should just disband that. The reason is, because if you don't have the 169 days, then you have to pay a 1% to 2%, it's almost like a penalty from the state. They're going to pay everyone who does meet this an extra 1% or 2% in revenues, it's about $400,000 for us. We're already in a position, we can't give up the $400,000, we won't want to do that just to save a better calendar, I believe. So I think that that's probably off the docket for us. Another aspect is a lot more money's been going towards vouchers now. So the whole purpose of 727, in my opinion, was to try to open up the door wider into getting money out of public education and putting it into private education. And I think you're going to see that continued before every year, they keep shipping away at it. When you watch a video from the state and they say, "Public education's under attack", that's who they're talking about, isn't it? And that's where it's going, is they're shipping away at the money. With this Senate Bill, up to 3% of our students could choose to go to another school district, even though they don't live there, they can just choose to go to 3%. If we lost 3% and didn't know about it, and it's already staffed up, then we have a lot of extra staff, a lot of extra money to waste, and that's going to be problematic for us. So those are some of the big issues there. I did want to bring up that due to some of the staffing, and we're going to have a couple openings still, and our next meeting isn't until the end of June. So it's a long time till now in the next board meeting. It is entirely possible we might ask for a special closed session just to approve some hiring to make sure we've got them in good contracts and have them ready for the start of school. We may need to do that in the next couple of weeks. If we do, we'll let you know. We'll probably do that later soon. I just wanted to make sure to do that. Also, we've got graduation. That already happened, good thing I put that in there. Last day of school is Friday, it's a full day on Friday. I know we've done half-days, every year we try to, but you know, it was worth making it a full day on Friday so we didn't have to come back on Monday. I think everybody is probably appreciative of that. It may not seem like it at 1:00 on Friday. You might be, you might say, "What are we thinking again?" But it really is much better than being on Monday. So I just want to remind everyone, it is a full day of school on Friday, and it's our normal release time. And that is all I have, Mr. President. All right? Any questions?
Can you hear now? Okay. I don't want to yell because it's a little loud. I have the honor of sharing with you an update tonight on the great things that I took place at Cornerstone. About this time last year, I had the privilege to stand in several, in front of several of you and propose our building improvement plan for what we were going to focus on this year. And tonight, I'd like to give you an update on all the great things that I took place. We really focused on raising the bar at Cornerstone, setting clear and concise high expectations across the board, not only for our academic achievements of students, but also their overall well-being. As you know, Dr. Miller talked about it earlier, Witten Wisdom's been a huge lift for staff this year, but I cannot be more proud of them. They dove in headfirst, they leaned in to do instructional strategies, new structures, and overall pacing, a whole new entity to literacy, and they've done it beautifully. They just, they really embraced it, and we've had some great conversations. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were sitting in the lab and reflecting on the hard, and a lot of them were reflecting on the positives that have come from Witten Wisdom. And some of those center around grit, so students are showing an overall confidence in their tackling of the individual tasks. That beginning of year brought a little tear to a few students because it was a struggle. But with the confidence that they had gained over the course of several months and the three modules that they completed this year, they are so proud of how they ended Module 3 this year with their task and the confidence that they've demonstrated. Another piece of this effective teaching and learning that I'd love to talk about is the collaboration. Our teachers get together on Thursdays, and we go through data, and we collaborate together. And a lot of the conversations this year were focused around Witten Wisdom instructional strategies and how we can incorporate those into science and math, and they've done a wonderful job. The conversations have also steered us into having conversations around forming flex grouping. And so flex grouping allows us to individualize some small groups focused on specific needs of kids, and with that, we've been able to really push some of our academic literacy needs of our overall students with those flex grouping. Something we've gone out and done, wrote this year, is our specials teachers, so those that are in charge of computers, library, art, music, and P.E. So those that are in charge of computers, library, art, music, and P.E., they have stepped in to stand side by side with the classroom teacher. And they have worked hard on having an intervention group throughout the day when they have had some opening in their schedule. They've done absolutely phenomenal, supporting overall learning in water towns and kindergarten, all the way to assisting kiddos by just maybe needing an attendance buddy and a leadership role. They've done phenomenal. So a huge shout out to our specialist teachers, they've done a great job. One of the things that I'm most proud of is our PDIS reboot. My lovely Stuca representatives have a little boogie to hand out to you. So as I continue to talk to you, you guys can hand it out to your special person. Can you hand it? You got it? PDIS, Dr. Everett talked about. And be responsible. Through that, we've taught kids what that looks like in all areas of Cornerstone. They are able to earn tiger tickets. And those tiger tickets are gold. They add up and on Fridays, they can cash those tiger tickets in for an incentive. And they've been very specific about the incentives that we have designed at Cornerstone. They're all centered around relationships. So kids can earn anywhere from a lunch with the principal to the lovely sticker book you have in front of you. To our surprise, kids have gone crazy over staff bitmoji stickers and using the sticker book to kind of shift them around. So they're building like classroom grade levels and special teams. And they get so excited for what the week, who's going to be released? What's going to be the new sticker? So you have a little sample of what that looks like. All of our students received the sticker book at the beginning of the year and then they have been able to purchase those bitmoji stickers. So we're very proud of that work. We're excited to dive into the next layers of that next year. The biggest part of our culture for staff has been centered around our tiger walks. My instructional coach, Jessica Henry, has done an absolutely outstanding job of structuring and building opportunities for teachers to get in and outside of classrooms. It doesn't sound like a defeat, but it is huge. She's done a great job of centering it around student engagement and academic discourse with students. And so essentially, a group of teachers will go into a classroom, they'll observe for a snippet at a time, and they'll walk out and they'll have conversations around what they saw, what they noticed, and what they wonder. And then they're able to walk back and take that back into their classroom and home their overall individual correct as a teacher. And it's just one of the greatest things that we've done in our culture. So thank you, Jessica. Our family engagement team has put on spectacular events at Cornerstone. Several of you know because you've been in attendance. They're always well-attended. Our biggest one was goodies with grandparents, absolutely blew us out of the water. We had so many individuals, we had to open our gym. So we're looking forward to bringing that event back next year, but doing it in two days. So we have some waves of time because we were just shocked by the amount of people that showed up for that. Absolutely phenomenal. The last piece of our culture and climate is our PTO. We have a very active group of parents who support anything and everything from grade-level colored t-shirts to they put party boxes together for our winter party, fall party, and Valentine's Day party. That ensures every kid at Cornerstone gets the same snack and a similar activity. They provided awesome meals to our staff. And one of the best things that they've done is they have sold over twenty thousand dollars worth of cookie dough. We were shocked, but they've done an absolute phenomenal job of just supporting the overall academic and overall well-being of a kiddo at Cornerstone. Our data. So the thing I would love to talk about first is looking at our STAR data this year. We've taken on a new assessment platform through STAR. Dr. Miller has talked about it several times this year. And we've been able to use this to gauge where our students are overall with their academics and literacy as well as in math. And with this, this has been able for us to adjust the instruction of what we need to shift or change inside a classroom. One of the things that we are really proud of, as we looked at our data in March for reading, we were able to shift forty-three students over to the meeting or exceeding category in reading. We just recently finished on Friday, so we're really excited to like dive into those final numbers of what our data looks like because there were so many kiddos that were anticipated to shift over from nearing to actually meeting or exceeding what that expectation was. So we're very proud of the work that our teachers have been doing in literacy. One of the biggest things we have embraced this year is reading success plans. So Dr. Miller just spoke of that earlier. It has provided a huge support to all of our students who have been identified as at-risk with a literacy need. We've worked with our literacy response team as well as our problem-solving team to put supports in place to support our at-risk readers. And throughout the course of the year, as of March 2024, we were able to shift fifty-five of our students off of the reading success plan. So with our updated data that we collected and students finished last week, we were really excited to see how many more have graduated off of the reading success plan and the decrease in our overall number of success plans that we have. There's a lot of more kinds of data there. We're very proud of our incentive parties that our students have been taking part in this year. As you can see, over four hundred students have participated each quarter. Essentially, if they have one or less referrals during that quarter, they're able to participate in a grade-level incentive party that is focused on something fine. So the one we're getting ready to do is bubbles and games. And we currently have four hundred and thirty-five kids slated for fourth quarter. So we're excited about those opportunities for our kids. Before I hand it over to the stars of the night, I would love to give this group a huge shout out. They've embraced so much this year. It's just been a heavy lift of a year, from new curriculum to just navigating new. And this group has done it beautifully. Every single one of them, I cannot be more proud of. They continue to work hard and stay focused on the overall student achievement that we've established at Cornerstone. And Mr. President and I just wanted to take an opportunity to celebrate each of those individuals. And as I finish my first year, I am reflecting on the overall turnover that we're experiencing on the building and at the district and really finding tuning those supports that we know we're going to put into place for next year. We know more than ever how important it is to build the connections and build the supports for not only our returning teachers, but also our new staff that we're going to have in building. So we're putting in place monthly and even weekly opportunities to check in on a teacher's overall social and emotional well-being as well as providing them whatever supports they need to be effective in a classroom. Without further ado, the stars of the show are our student council representatives from Cornerstone. So come join me. So just use your finger up if you're not down.
Good evening. We are the student council representatives from Cornerstone. My hands are good. I'm a fellow representative. The student council this year, we've done several things to help others throughout our school. We've created spirit weeks that encourage new students to teachers and create Kump Club. Kump Club is one of our main purposes.
During Kump Club, eight through two students, students who partner with a group through a five-student row representative, we spend time together after school playing games and doing crafts. Through this, we give grants and do more students than we do at the beginning of the school year.
We have to tell them that we're still supporting ours throughout the whole group. We're so proud to signal our new power, we're really so proud. We're proud of our efforts and leadership that we have put in for our students.
Thank you for letting us share with us what we have been doing this year to make a difference at Cornerstone.
We would like to give a special shout out to this year.
She has led our student group this year. She's not going to be helping.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I do, I do have a question. So you have, you had a certain luck kind of thing for us going to? I know for fifth grade, you're moving on to sixth grade, but others that are still there, will you have the same come next year? That way you can have a very long-term friendship.
That's the goal. That's the goal. That's it here, perfect. I like it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is preliminary 24th question from Dr. Schwan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to review the budget for next year. I wanted to bring this this month and then next month we'll actually approve the budget for next year. But I wanted to make sure I was on the same page with you guys before we really tidied this up. It's a labor of love, the budgets. Dr. Boomer is very excited to get his hands on it and to start working with it, I can tell. It's funny how it ebbs and flows quite a bit with, you know, you have a Senate bill passes that changes everything. State adequacy target is going up next year. So what that means is the amount of money that the state is going to put into the formula is going to increase. The problem for us is where it's going to push us off of whole harmless and make us a formula school. We're going to be on the formula next year, which we've never been on before. So that's going to be interesting. So we don't know specifically how that's going to hit us. My initial projections are it's probably going to cost us about 1.2 million dollars a year. But that's everything we're equal and everything's not. But we do have some increased ADA, there is increased funding from the state that's going to help cut into those losses where I think in the long run, we're actually maybe better off. But I just don't know what, how it's going to come in until next year. So next year is really going to be a period of flux for us to see how it goes. So we're going to monitor that very closely. I think the biggest aspect of what you're seeing on this preliminary budget, you see a great decrease in federal revenues. Well, that kind of makes sense if you think about it. We're no longer getting ESSER money from the government. So that was a couple million dollars every year flowing in. That money cuts off, well, that's why you see a big drop in revenue coming in from the federal government. We're not receiving those additional funds now. You do see some additional costs when it comes to salaries and purchase services. Everything's going up, right? So when we read that our contract with air markets, more expensive now than it was five years ago. Our bus contract, more expensive now than it was last year. All of these things, all are a huge pressure on our budget. And it's going to cost us to be in a deficit budget for this year. I'm going to bring you a deficit budget for this year, knowing that we're going to spend more than we're going to bring in, at least off of our projections. Okay? I think it's important to do that because we can't fall further behind when it comes to paying benefits. And we do have the reserves to cover it, but it's going to require us probably dropping down about seventeen to eighteen percent reserves instead of being over twenty like the goal of citizens' goal. And I want to be upfront with you about that right now. If everything goes to our plans, we're going to end up around seventeen percent reserves at the end of next year. That would be my projection. Again, that assumes where we start, what happens in the middle, a million moving pieces, but that's my best guess. So that being said, do you guys have any questions specifically about this? Are you overall amenable to the, amenable, amenable, amenable to the ideas of what we're moving forward with and how we're building our relationship? Does that make sense?
This is not going to change back any time soon. The way you're talking, we're not going to go back to the old.
No. No, I don't, I don't see us ever going back to being whole harmless again. Those days probably don't. Because the adequacy target is slated to continue to rise in subsequent years. And that's what's pushing us on. We've always been kind of close.
Yeah. And this overall, does that have to do with what we're talking about?
It does. I'll be honest, it's not sustainable to have a three percent deficit budget each year. And you cannot do that for very long before you're going to be woke, right? So it's not, but at the same time, we also don't know what next year is going to bring and how this is going to play out for us. So I do think it's okay. I would rather make a decision one year late than one year early, to be honest. Because I'd rather have factual information to base those on. Right now, it's all projections, so. Any questions about all that? Are you in the most part amenable to the direction we're moving in? Because this is going to really dictate how I iron this out for bringing a formal proposal and approval next month.
It's a lot. The guarantee I was like, what's there? Did you not give a thousand dollars to the bank? Yeah. I mean, somehow you've got to figure out how do we move that people. It's not a lot, but it's a little bit. Like I said, I mean, salaries are one thing that will, it never changes. I mean, it's going to continue up here, right? So when you start taking out reserves for salaries, that's not a lot of time spent. That's like, so definitely look at your reserves.
Great.
So you, I mean, it's too many, it's one year, yes, but there's got to be some kind of cure. Whether it's a tax levy, I mean, there's got to be a cure that can continue.
Correct. And we can't continue to have our classified salary coming in at twelve dollars an hour.
No, I mean.
Can't do it. Can't do it. So I think there's going to be quite a number of things that we can do. I'm still optimistic that we're going to be okay in the long run. But this next year or two is definitely going to be interesting. There's going to be some big decisions. Well, at the end of the day, we just have to make a decision of who we are and who we want to be. Who are we as a community and how important is public education to our community? Because other people, I know Smithville, for instance, they're passing another increase to their paying time. So we either have to keep up with the Joneses or we have to redefine who we want to be. And that's where we're at right now.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Moving on along to human resources update, Dr. Schwan.
Good place is the board, Mr. President. I would like to share a human resources update. Excuse me, from the office. Allergic, excuse me. So I got something. Staff turnover data. So district total staff throughout the district, 295 of us certified and classified employees in this analysis. Resigning, 25, retiring, six. So we actually had two put in after this was due. And then, so that makes it, for those numbers are taken into account. Total staff leaving would be 31, which makes our district turnover percent about 11%. In comparison, North Kansas City is about 13% when I talked to them on Monday. When you look at the size of our staff, which is 295, and the size of their staff, where they have more staff members than we have students, that 2% is a large number of humans that they're trying to fill, which is why you see them coming knocking on our door paying people 15,000 to 19,000 more dollars. So as Dr. Thomas has talked about, Dr. Miller's talked about, and I've talked about. And we'll talk about some reasons the staff that's selected to be leaving on the exit survey. But that's a big one. Compensation is a huge one that we're going to have to make some decisions on moving forward in the next year, two years, three years. How do we recruit, how do we obtain highly qualified teachers? Survey data. So we sent a exit survey to all of our staff members. So we sent it out to all 25 or all 31 staff members that are leaving. We had a 70% survey rate response, which is 23 total responses and about 12 comments were on there. First one, what prompted you to leave the district? These are the top four responses. Compensation, location. If you can move closer where you live, a lot of our staff members live in Liberty, North Kansas City. If they can work where they live and make significantly more money, it's hard to compete with that. And it's hard to, it's hard to blame a staff member who may be leaving at the end of their career and they can bump up their potential retirement by a thousand dollars a month for the rest of their life. That's a, you, you, you know, like you can't blame them for doing that. So those are things that we have to take into account to make some of those difficult decisions moving forward. Retirement's another one. And then just support, general support. Whether it's from the district, from the building, you know, extra training, support. Job satisfaction. So the question here was, how would you rate the following in relation to your job? So some of the highest rated responses were cooperation with the department. They love working with their department. Communications with coworkers and communication with administrators. Some areas that they defined as needs improvement with the 23 responses were growth potential, job satisfaction, Some areas that they defined as needs improvement with 23 responses were growth potential, job satisfaction and training, and then communication with the districts. And then if you, as you dig through some of the 12 comments, requesting more training, as we talked about, Dr. Miller addressed, remember cards to instructional programs and decision-making, request more opportunities to meet and discuss with administration. That's when we started these SIB level meetings. This spring, we started those. Where district administration went out to the buildings and just sat and spoke and listened to the staff members. We're hoping as those become more normal and regular, how we do business, hopefully that improves. But again, what we really need to do, and I'll talk about in a second, we need to take these 23 responses and compare it to the other 260 people that aren't leaving when we did that survey and call, and find out why are they staying, having to prepare those things. This stuff's important to know why they're leaving. We want to address it, but we also want to compare it with the 260 people that are staying and why they're staying. And make sure we're not over the correct progression. Supervision feedback. So they were asked to rank, um, feedback on their supervisor, on their supervisors, highest rated, demonstrated fair and equal treatment, and then followed policies and procedures, needs improvement, job recognition. We're always in every job. We're always looking at how we can recognize one another, recognize our teachers in our building, our staff members. And that's something we continue to address in the district. And then complaint resolution. So it needs improvement, but also we do a good job of following policies and procedures as the highest rated. So I have to dig into that on 23 responses if you see if there's anything that we can get from the comments. And also compare that to the data that we did. Um, next steps. So like I said, we want to compare this. We'll ask very similar, if not the exact same question from the volume that we got to all the staff members. And that would give us some data to compare there. And we're excited about getting that information. So current openings. So we actually walked an extra opening in. So we currently have four elementary classroom openings. If you know anyone who's interested in a new career or is an elementary teacher, feel free to come to us. Title one at Lewis, PE teacher at Lewis, a speech language pathologist, which I believe we've been looking for for almost 20 years. Autism spectrum disorder teacher and science. Do you have any questions?
Not good.
Well, if you have a degree, we give you a chance. And we're waiting for a new career.
On the survey that you did, the exit survey, did you give them the, um, the statements in which they selected? Which one best fit them or did you allow them open and provide feedback?
So there were, I believe, six to eight responses and they selected their top three. And so what we did was rank them, and the company that we utilize helps us rank them. So we ranked them based on what, what was highly, they felt highly supported or felt strongly about. Some of them was select the three reasons that you may be leaving the district, so they selected one of them. So they were, um, they were asked and able to answer in different ways. There was a comment section at the end where they were able to put in general comments. That was kind of what we said. There were 12 people decided to put in comments. And actually about half, maybe six of the comments were about the phenomenal job that Jill and Bryson are doing at Lewis, with the difficult situation they have with the trailers and sharing a building. So it's a perfect opportunity to share that with you guys. You're doing an excellent job. So you know, some staff are leaving and there's turnover there. They wanted to go out of their way on this opportunity to thank them for the hard job, leaving them. That's not bad. Did that, did that answer a little bit?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And of course, we save the best for last. Job Corps Center update. Mr. Ben Ruby.
I'm not asking for money.
This time.
This time.
That's why you're only last.
That's right.
After that budget comments, you can see why you're not asking for money.
Um, so last month, I got approached by a couple of board members if they'd kind of given an update on, kind of like, hey, why is Job Corps? Maybe how are we kind of tied? How are we related? So, um, I'm right now, I kind of oversee the high school aspect of Job Corps. And then there are students, they have students that recount for us that, um, can also kind of go through how we're all time related. So a little background on it. Job Corps, you guys all know where it is. Top of the hill, going way out to downtown. It's located on 26 acres. It's been in Excelsior Springs for 50-plus years now. I believe it started as a women's, um, education facility, and then it's kind of merged into a job corps. So, uh, what is Job Corps? Who qualifies for all of that? So it's available to any student that's 16 to 24. It's free of cost for anybody that's technically, if this class line is low income. So most of the students included in that cost are books, supplies, anything related to the program. If you have like a uniform requirement, that's all covered. And most students live on-site. So every state has a Job Corps. Missouri has three. One type primarily is for the St. Louis side. There's one that is specialized in the arts, and in ours is kind of where, for all of Missouri. So we get students from all over the state of Missouri that come to the Job Corps here. And like I said, there are some stipulations, or some, I guess, stipulations where you can live off-site, but for the most part, kids live on-campus at the Job Corps. And the other kind of unique thing is, is it runs a year long. So there is no winter break. There's no summer break. They have, yes, they have holidays off, but once you're a student, you're a student until you're a program complete. And I'll talk a little bit more about that during that. But so they, they have, they run year-long. So when we, uh, when we send our kids to summer, that's kind of like when they start their summer school session, which lasts the entire summer. Uh, the center there, the Job Corps Center offers 11 programs in construction, healthcare, hospitality, security and manufacturing. With that, if kids do complete their program of study and have their necessary credits, they also, if they pass the, what we give this called the TAE test. So they have to pass a minimum score on reading and math. That's basically a high school requirements slate. They can get our diploma. So they get an Excelsior Springs technical high school diploma. And what is beneficial is, uh, what I've been told from a lot of the students there and the people at Job Corps is that when they leave the center and they're going to apply, it asks you, hey, do you have your high school diploma? Do you have a high school competency? And employers really like the fact that they have a diploma. So that's kind of where we come in. So if they meet all of our requirements, then we set forth with credits, the TAE testing, and then program Twitter, they can already have a Ted High School diploma. So in the past, um, that has been, um, up until, I'll show you some numbers, but up until here in the last couple of years, I would say probably three or four dozen a year have graduated, pretty much came to a halt during COVID. And so we're slowly pulling that number back up, which is good for everyone. So the programs, like I said, are self-paced. Most kids are on, um, so if you get there, you're really motivated, you want to get done, you can, you can in as quickly as nine months. Some kids take over two years to complete. It just kind of depends how credit deficient they are or how long it takes them to complete their program. Some of them don't take as long, especially like in the tech part of it. Some of them don't have as many hours or requirements to complete the program. So some of them are able to get out there in a couple, um, nine months to a couple of years. Some others take longer. And then after graduation, they do a really good job of setting the kids up for success. Each kid is assigned a transition specialist. This person helps them with job search assistance for counseling, relocation counseling, and advanced training opportunities. So it's not like they just give them something, hey, they'll figure it out. So they do follow-ups with them pretty regularly to kind of track where they're at and if they're being successful as a transition of this particular course. So that's something kind of, we do kind of, we have a, the school does a 180-day follow-up. They kind of do a six-month follow-up. They can continue that for a couple of years to kind of monitor, see where they're at. That, so then of all the programs they're doing, um, we have some that are similar. So we've, we've actually, a couple of our programs, we've had our teachers kind of collaborate with them, kind of meet and talk with them, kind of share ideas about what they're doing. And then recently, um, we've talked with their, Lori Samz, who's our director, I've been in contact with her about setting up our CNA students. The testing part of that is pretty robust and kind of a pain to kind of get scheduled and trained. So we're going to have our instructor become an A-certified trainer. And that way they can, she can help test their kids and get them out of the faster. So one of the things they run into is if kids are ready to take the certification test, well, for example, if they're a CNA kid, they might have to wait a month and go test in Columbia to get that done. So that's a big problem because you're, you have the kid just staying there for a month, not really, you know, losing out on potential working because they have to wait for their, their certification to be. So, um, some ways we're trying to help, like, help each other out and get each other certified so that we can get kids who belong in sort of that category. So going back to the tuition part or the ADA part, um, as you can see, I have numbers going back to 1920. So, um, right before COVID and then at COVID, numbers were pretty, pretty robust. So I'd say that's probably right around average of a grade level of our kids, of Excelsior kids. So 177, 168, that's about each grade level for the most part. We have a couple of bigger groups, a couple of smaller groups. Uh, then COVID hit, shut everything down. Regulations became pretty robust and stringent there. So like, it wasn't worth it for them to, to go on-site. So you can see our numbers dipped pretty heavily. And then this school year right now, as of, um, as of right now, the current rule is 150. I'm projecting ADA will probably be when we get done about 140. So why that's important, just your Dr. Tomlinson, Dr. Boomer, Dr. Miller, Dr. Everett talked about funding. So this is good for both us and the career center. The higher numbers we have, we get ADA from the state for them too as well. So we need those numbers even go up. So hopefully, I would like to hopefully get, the center, they're working hard too. Maybe that number around 200 kids that are enrolled and get ADA. So that helps us, helps everybody out. So. I, um, so again, I work with a couple of different people, Lori Samz and Susan Stanley are my two main contact people at Job Corps. Uh, they're the director and kind of like the career counselor type positions. So we, we talk, I would say right or late, but we talk quite often. And so we have a lot of core data stuff that we have to report. And so making sure we have that accurate number today is very important for us. At this time, if there's any questions that you weren't happy to answer this question.
I do have a question. Sometimes at the career center, you have a waitlist because classes are filled. Is it possible that those students then can get the same training at the job corps?
Yeah. So we've, we've looked into that. Kind of, we've met with, met with them a couple of times on how that would work. And just kind of working out the, the logistics of it all because, you know, depending on the school schedule, whether it be our kids or CNA schools, like, has to match up with time there. And then just making sure they have space in their programs too. So, and that's definitely been something we've talked about. Especially because they offer a couple of different programs that maybe we don't have, that maybe our kids are interested in. The thing, the key thing would just be the logistics of the scheduling. So getting kids there, making sure it's during the right times, and then getting it back.
Aren't there two instructors licensed in the department labor?
Well, they, yes, but they're, this is all run through the department labor, but this is all, but they're certified. It has to be Missouri certified in order for us to.
Yes. Most of them are certified too in department labor.
Uh, they have, they have Missouri certificates. Yeah. That's what we have to report on to make sure. We don't get credit for them if it's, just like any of our teachers, like, we don't have the certified staff. We don't get credit for that.
I want to point out, Mr. Ruby said that there are three job corps in the state. We are the only ones that partner, like, job, that Job Corps is the only one that partners with the school district. So a lot of times, like, Mr. Ruby has done a beautiful job of navigating this because there's no one to call on how to do this. We just have to figure it out. Um, so it's a lot of problem solving and just, it's all about that partnership. It's, it's just a very unique thing. Um, and then does it, does it with grace. He, he does such a good job.
I don't like to hear her walk around. Man, that's a cool setup.
They have their own water towers.
I know.
They have their, they have a hair salon.
Yeah. I have not used that yet.
Yeah. They have, they have an amazing setup.
That is cool.
Well, I think it's great that you gave an update on me because I don't know that our general public knows how integrated we are with Job Corps. And I think that's great to like, share a little about that.
They do a great job. They're out, I mean, they're always out in chamber meetings or, you know, they're trying to promote their students. They do a good job. It's good. It's good for them. I mean, for, you know, for people that, you know, don't have any necessarily means for, like, you get, you know, for a high guy like this, it's a great career inform. So kind of give that deal like if it weren't for this.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby.
Thank you, guys.
Earlier this time, I entertained a motion to adjourn. First by Kate. Second by all those three. Passes six to zero. Thank you all for coming out and seeing us.